We have a dimension of our discussions about interfaith dialogue, which perhaps is not always the case at Arms Control Disarmament events, but we think it's extremely important. One of the people I'd hoped to contribute couldn't be with us today, but it was his idea to invite Dr. Park from Korea, the president of the World Methodist Council, an old friend of mine, Patson better known around the country at least as an impresario of pop festivals, Michael Eavis, who created the Glastonbury Festival some 50 years ago. But what people aren't aware of is that he's been propelled all these years by his methodism, by the message of John Wesley. And although he couldn't be with us, he agreed to have a chat with me, which we'll see as a short video in a minute, about the underlying principles of universal values of peace that propel his work. People who go to the festival or see the stages will see banners across the front. Greenpeace, Oxfam, Martin, my friend from Oxfam, WaterAid. What these banners symbolize are millions of pounds donated to these charities through the festival, as well as the message, progressive messages that are projected through the festival. So I just want to share with you a short conversation that he and I had a couple of days ago about his values underpinning his work towards good causes and the values of joyfulness and celebration, epitomized by what is now the world's greatest music festival. Not necessarily the way in which fundamental Christian values are often described in the media, but you'll hear from Michael, that's very much how he sees it. And through that, I want to extend a further welcome to Dr. Park. Many, many years, and all that time, your values and your methodism have really informed the way in which you run the festival and contribute to peace. And I wanted you to talk about that as we're having a dialogue at the university with people from all different religions, including the World Methodists. You started with methodism very, very early.
Well, I started when I was three. And my father was a preacher and my mother was a teacher. And they were very keen Methodists. And so that we all went to the chapel, the Methodist Chapel in Pilton, to Sunday school on Sundays. And then... And we were indoctrinated, I would say, by the adoption of John Wesley, of the link between religion and socialism. So there had to be a purpose into our lives that was based really on the social responsibility to humanity. So I had that from the age of three. And so I was a great believer in the Christian message.
And for you, that Christian message has been very much about peace. And when we first knew each other 40 years ago, of course, we were involved in anti-nuclear work. And now again, we're having to worry about war.
Yeah, we certainly are. I mean, there's more... It's more threatening now than it has been through all that time, Dan, I reckon, don't you?
I do, yes.
It's more dangerous now than it was 30, 40 years ago even.
I think so, and of course...
When the CND movement was so strong in those days, in the 70s, that we were all part of.
Yes.
And that you were the leader of, in fact, weren't you?
Well, one of them, yes, when we first got together. Of course, now we were trying hard to build energy again. And I wondered if you got a message. You're very keen on the next generation, the TNG, as you call it, whether or not what you would say to young people today. Because of course, you spent a lot of your life and a lot of the festival supporting peace activities, Greenpeace, CND, Oxfam.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I just hope that the young people, I think the young people have got it on board, don't you? And that they are concerned and they are worried about the future of the world through the eyes of Putin and Donald Trump and co., you know what I mean?
It has scared people again.
There's a big... There's a lot of fear about the future, I think. And it never has been a better reason to campaign for peace than now.
Yes, we're also trying to get a new initiative at the UN to move these things forward. But as we're talking to different religions, how for you does Wesley's message about peace inform the way in which you go about how you run the festival in your daily life? Because Wesley has a great deal to say about peace, doesn't he?
Yeah, well, certainly. I've been steered by the views of John Wesley through the whole of my life, basically. And we go to chapel on Sundays and we sing the hymns and all that kind of thing. But there is a fundamental truth to the John Wesley message that runs right through the whole of the Christian doctrine. And so that's why it worked for me. And it's been effective in all the things I've done. I've done my social housing. It's been a huge part of my life, setting that up. And the festival is run hopefully on fundamental Christian principles. But it might not be fundamentally obvious all the time. But that's what's driving me at night and day. The whole of my life is actually driven by those principles I was weaned on by John Wesley. And they're more effective now. And I think that they're more meaningful now than they ever were, you know? And I think the world is becoming more and more dangerous now. There were these big players that are playing a more pivotal role. And it is decidedly more dangerous than it was in the 70s.
Yes, I agree. I mean, as you know, my late mother was a Quaker. And so, you know, they're quite close to the Methodists. And we shared in our background very similar values when you and I first worked together 40 years ago. And it was kind of you to say nice things about how we worked together then.
Yeah, that was great. Well, you were a great help to me then, Dan. And I mean, you're doing your job now. Campaigning for world peace, which is really, really so important. And so let's hopefully that you can become successful in that sphere.
Well, we'll do our best. Talking about saving bacon, and as you know, I got my chequebook out once or twice in those days as well. But now, of course, there are many more religions active in Britain around the world. And I think at the festival, we see people coming in from different faiths. And the festival seems to be very, very inclusive in that way.
Yeah, I do hope so, yeah. We're all fundamental believers in the fundamental truths of the views of John Wesley, which are quite... They're universal, basically, aren't they? They really are. And the future of life, as we know it, it depends on those values being upheld. I'm a firm believer in that.
Yes, and hopefully what we can do together to push forward this new initiative with the UN will help do that. And hopefully you and I can continue to work on that.
Yeah, fantastic, Dan. Thank you very much.
Well, thanks very much for joining us, Michael. Thanks a lot.
Good afternoon and welcome back to Scrap Weapons Conference on activating a UN special session on disarmament. My name is Zara Kapasi and I am the project manager at Scrap Weapons. So this morning, we have heard from governmental institutions and delegations, as well as representatives from the Scrap Weapons team. I would now like to welcome religious representatives from the Gandhi Research Foundation, the World Methodist Council, the Rastian Trust Fund of Europe, Lebanon's Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue, and the Vatican Diocese for Interreligious Dialogue to discuss the role of interreligious dialogue for peace and development. I would like to thank our speakers for their time and support. And it is now my pleasure to introduce our first guest. Our first speaker today will be Dr. Geeta Dharampal, who is the dean of research at the Gandhi Research Foundation, based in Jalgar, India. She is a retired professor and former head of the Department of History at the South Asia Institute in Heidelberg University. Her publications and research focus includes topics ranging from pre-modern trans-cultural interactions between Europe and India, the maritime cultural history of the Indian Ocean region, medical history, religious ritual transformations, the sociocultural and political history of the colonial period in general, with a special emphasis on Mahatma Gandhi's movement of political and cultural resurgence. She has held visiting fellowships and professorships at various international institutions, including, among others, Stanford University in the United States and Indian universities in Delhi, Kolkata and Hyderabad. Thank you, Dr. Geeta, and I look forward to your intervention. Apologies, doctor, I think.
Yes, yeah, right. Thank you very much indeed for this kind introduction. My warm greetings to the eminent panelists and to all members of the audience, offline and online. And my sincere gratitude to the efficient organizers of this important conference. It's a real honour for me to say a few words today. And my short presentation is entitled, "Today's Alternative: Nonviolence or Nonexistence." And I begin with a quote. I'll be turning off my video because my connection is a little unstable. I'm in a provincial place in India and therefore I'll just save the... Yeah, I'm sorry. I hope you can hear me. The quote that I'm beginning with is states, "Nonviolence or Ahimsa is the only thing that the atom bomb cannot destroy." I did not move a muscle when I first heard that the atom bomb had wiped out Hiroshima. On the contrary, I said to myself, "Unless now the world adopts nonviolence, it will spell certain suicide for mankind," end of quote. This iconic statement by Mahatma Gandhi in the aftermath of the cataclysmic bombing of Hiroshima and Nagasaki in August 1945 rings all too true for us today, and more so than ever before. Not only had the atom bomb not exploded its deep-rooted faith, but rather this diabolic weapon had clearly demonstrated for this prophet of nonviolence that Ahimsa and Satya, nonviolence in truth, remained unassailable, or more powerfully expressed in his own words, that I quote, "The twins of Ahimsa and Satya constitute the mightiest force in the world. Before it, the atom bomb is of no effect." And he elaborated further, "The two opposing forces are wholly different in kind. The one, Ahimsa, moral and spiritual; the other, physical and material. The one is infinitely superior to the other, which by its very nature has an end. The force of the spirit, that is Ahimsa, is very progressive and endless. Its full expression makes it unconquerable in the world," end of quote. In his last years, between December 1945 and the 30th of January 1948, the day of his assassination, categorically condemning nuclear armament, Gandhi reiterated explicitly that the development of the atom bomb represented the most sinful and diabolical use of science. And even more apodictically, that the atom bomb mentality was immoral, unethical, addictive, and that only evil could come of it. For according to him, quote, "The atom bomb only aggravates violence and never protects against it, and therefore symbolizes the futility of violence," end of quote. So in a nutshell, nonviolence for him was the only antidote against the atom bomb and the only way to cannibalize hatred and resolve conflicts. Lastly, he exalted that, quote, "It is the duty of large nations and all other nations in the interest of world peace to give up the atom bomb," end of quote. That's what we're doing today. So now faced with the contemporary scenario in which the present nuclear arsenals are equivalent to over a million times that of Hiroshima bomb and can destroy the human civilization many times over, confronted with this extraordinary crisis and yet inspired by Gandhi, we are called upon to make a sincere commitment to rebuild a safer, nuclear weapons-free world. However, this can only succeed if there is solidarity and unity, not only between nation-states, but also between world religions, so that together we can transform our doomsday predicament into a nursery of cooperation and empathy. For as Gandhi emphasized, Ahimsa signifies not just physical nonviolence, but means more extensively avoiding any harm, whether physical, mental or emotional. Ideally, Ahimsa also implies the renunciation of any form of domination over other things or beings. In short, the paramount importance also in all Indic religions given to Ahimsa can greatly contribute towards world peace. As mentioned earlier, Ahimsa for Gandhi is paired with Satya, truth derived from sat, which signifies an existential and unifying foundation of all that lives. As such, Ahimsa, thus enhanced with Satya, not only represents a force greater than violence, but also connotes that self-sacrifice is preferable to the sacrifice of others. So one is willing to sacrifice oneself for the purpose of Ahimsa. Another dimension stressed by Gandhi is Ahimsa's faithful consort, Karuna. Meaning compassion, Karuna is considered an inherent quality in all human beings. Because of the underlying oneness of all beings, Karuna is extended to others, not just out of love, but because it is an entirely logical thing to do. As a direct antidote to cruelty and indeed as a psychospiritual bomb against the deadening influence of the atom bomb, Karuna can help to eliminate callousness and indifference to the woes of others. To mitigate the imminent danger of nuclear warfare, Gandhi again, most aptly observed, I quote, "Behind the death-dealing bomb, there is the human hand that releases it. And behind that still is the human heart that sets the hand in motion." And he concluded that, "Just as the hardest metal yields to the sufficient heat, even so must the hardest heart melt before the sufficiency of the heat of nonviolence," end of quote. So provided we are sincerely committed to Ahimsa, Satya and Karuna in thought and deed, we would not only retrieve the sacred in modern times, but also reinforced by our unstinting negotiations at all levels, we would contribute to rescuing the world from this threatening apocalyptic disaster. More explicitly, in line with a verse from the Rikveda and in the Gandhian spirit, which exhorts us to, I quote, "Come together, talk together, let our minds be in harmony, perfect be the union among us," end of quote. Let us in mutuality and fellowship eschew every form of polarization and violence that leaves society in a monologue mode rather than enabling dialogue. Let us appeal to the humanity of all nation-states to tackle our shared moral task so that discord can metamorphose into a transformative and cooperative new paradigm. Our ultimate goal through interreligious dialogue, laying down weapons of the mind and the heart, is to advance integral, universal disarmament to rid the globe of nuclear weapons. Not only because they cause catastrophic harm that even affects future generations, but also because they are totally obsolete and are utterly unable to meet today's challenges. Instead, we should create a global fund from the astronomical nuclear expenditure to be used infinitely more viably for health, education and the fight against climate change, and thereby ensure human and environmental security and wellbeing globally. Bearing all these considerations in mind, I would like to stress the importance to each and every one of us of calling on the United Nations General Assembly to issue a resolution in support of activating a fourth special session on disarmament. To conclude, Gandhi's inspiration, together with the wisdom derived from all world religions, provides us with a moral compass to help us navigate our way away from the cataclysmic disaster to shape a new paradigm in order to realize a safer, more humane and sustainable future for our planet Earth. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you, Dr. Dharampal, for your message on Ahimsa and Satya, so nonviolence in truth, and for reiterating the Hindu-Gandhian perspective on disarmament. I would now like to introduce our second speaker, Reverend Dr. Jong-Chun Park, who is the president of the World Methodist Council. So Reverend Park is a Korean Methodist pastor, serving the Methodist Theological University in Seoul for 30 years in the position of professor and president. He graduated from Emory University and received a PhD in systematic theology. He has been the chair of the Theological Education Committee of the World Methodist Council, as well as the co-chair of the Oxford Institute of Methodist Theological Studies. Reverend Dr. Park is a prominent Christian leader working for the Methodist churches in Asia and ecumenical churches in Korea. Thank you, Dr. Park.
Thank you for inviting me to be here, especially Professor Dan Plech. Also, I was very moved when I watched the video on the prominent Methodist leader, Michael Eavis. I'm so excited about the possibility of meeting him soon. Thank you for that. And I didn't know that you were an animus Methodist. Anyway, I think Methodist people are singing Christians, Charles Wesley's tradition. So probably Michael learned from that tradition. And also Koreans are known as Irish people in East Asia. So we love singing and that is why K-pop has come from. And I remember, I think Dan and you and me belong to the Peters generation, not BTS. But Lenin's, John Lenin's phrase in Imagine, "Imagine there's no countries, it isn't hard to do, nothing to kill or die for." I think that is still very prophetic. Because we are now struggling in conflict and war. Because of what? In the name of nationalism. I think nationalism is number one heresy, according to my theological judgment. So international effort to activate the special session on disarmament in the coming UN General Assembly is a very, very, I think, important and is our whole, I think, the humankind's common mission. And I appreciate what the strategic concept for the multiple arms and proliferation script that indicates. I really like that phrase, strategic concept, you know? So I think I have been learning and still will learn through this conference a lot of strategic concepts. And because I'm theologian, I'm not really well-buried in this armament argument and these courses. So I'm learning, I'm getting a lot from you. As a theologian and a pastor, but I can contribute to not strategic concept, but maybe spiritual intuition. As Immanuel Kant says, "Concept without intuition is empty." Of course, intuition without concept is very dangerous because it is blind. And also I appreciate the Scrap's effort in incorporating the feminist movement in this disarmament effort. For me, bombs carry these felix symbols which have to be deconstructed only by the feminist logic and practice. So I do feel deep solidarity with feminist counterlogos, counter-logic and counter-practices against nuclear arms and arms race. Let me just, because I come from Korea and representing World Methodist Council, so during my presidential term, I have been focusing on this issue. So let me begin with the Korean issue. According to 2021 World Military Expenditures and Arms Transfers, which is the final edition the US Department of State published, the North Korea's military expenditure per GDP from 2009 to 2019 has been number one in the world. The military expenditure of North Korea during this period is the average 23.5% of GDP, while only 2.5% of GDP in South Korea. However, the real amount of North Korean military expenditure is quite smaller than that of South Korea. It's in six times, even 10 times sometimes. The bellicose rhetoric of Kim Jong-un, the supreme leader of North Korea, in his speech on July 27, 2022, "69th anniversary of Korean War Armistice" reflects the desperate military and economic situation of North Korea. The new conservative government of South Korea has provoked North Korea by the statement of preemptive strike. The tension will increase as the South Korea-US joint military drills, which took place from August 22 to September 1, are going to be conducted, was conducted on a large scale, large scale in late August till September 1. It is shocking, but no wonder that Kim warned of... It is shocking, but no wonder that Kim warned of nuclear war deterrence by saying, quote, “The Yunseok-yoong government and his army will be annihilated,” unquote. As more and more powerful U.S. weapons are expected to be deployed for the joint military drills, even while North Korea is preparing to conduct its seventh nuclear test, the arms race on the Korean Peninsula will intensify in the coming months. In the keynote address of the Beijing Forum 2010, the renowned German theologian Julian Moltmann raised an important question, quote, “What happens when a nation possessing nuclear weapons becomes obsessed with this religion of death and turns into a collective suicidal assassin against the rest of the human world? Because it is driven into a corner and gives up all hope,” unquote. Therefore, the first and foremost priority of disarmament and peace at the brink of nuclear war is dialogue and diplomacy on the basis of compassionate listening to the enemy. Sincerely acknowledging the right of the other side to exist, we have to think about and even empathize with what’s going on inside North Korea, not just along the demilitarized zone. It was the former U.S. ambassador to South Korea, my mentor, James Delaney, who tried to shift American foreign policy from snubbing the North Koreans to walking to find common ground to be human and humane. Critiquing both neocon imperialism as well as liberal imperialism of the U.S., imposing its will upon the world. Delaney sees the heritage of American constitutional democracy lies in the mission, quote, “To be a people of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for whom life is larger than the self. The expression of that largeness is a quality of spirit and generosity, collegiship, participation, just sympathy, the ability to think in behalf and for another person. The next step of peace and reconciliation is to organize for peace, not for war. A new format of the Six Party Talk, namely P3 plus three, three nuclear states and UN Security Council members, member states of the U.S., Russia and China, plus three UN member states of South Korea, North Korea, and Japan, has to be resumed with a new modus vivendi for establishing the denuclearized zone in Northeast Asia. The diplomatic format to overcome the threat of nuclear weapons is still appropriate for full international cooperation, a matter of the organizational power in the comprehensive international system. Furthermore, a bottom-up organizing for peace is necessary to complete the above-mentioned top-down approach. Korea Peace Appeal is an international campaign that seeks to amplify voices calling for an end to the Korean War and a transition from armistice to peace. More than 370 South Korean civil organizations, religious groups, individual supporters, and more than 70 international partner organizations, including the World Methodist Council, are participating in the Korea Peace Appeal. The peace treaty should be the final stage of Korea Peace Appeal. The grassroots process of peace treaty movement has to be carried out by resisting the South Korea-U.S. joint military drills, violating the Mutual Defense Treaty between the United States and Republic of Korea. While the U.S. and South Korea describe their exercise as defensive, the drills will reportedly include exercise simulating joint attacks. China, North Korea’s main ally, expressed concern over the expansion of U.S. military exercises with its Asian allies, saying they could worsen tensions with North Korea. There is also increasing evidence that the sanctions regime on the DPRK is having adverse humanitarian consequences. Unlike imposing the sanctions against the apartheid, by which the ecumenical bodies, including World Methodist Council, triumphantly resisted, we are called by God to be united in deep solidarity for lifting the unethical sanctions, causing adverse humanitarian and developmental consequences, exacerbating rates of domestic violence, sexual violence, and the trafficking in prostitution of women. Therefore, it is appropriate to ponder that Dietrich von Herper said in his address to Fano Ecumenical Conference long time ago in 1934, quote, “There is no way to peace along the way of safety, for peace must be dead. It is the great adventure, great venture. It can never be made safe. Peace is the opposite of security. To demand guarantees is to mistrust, and this mistrust in turn brings forth war,” unquote. An immensity caused by mistrust has increased on the Korean Peninsula since U.S.-North Korea nuclear negotiations derailed in early 2019 because of differences over relaxation of crippling U.S.-led sanctions on North Korea in exchange for disarmament steps. Kim Jong-un has since declared North Korea will bolster its nuclear deterrent in the face of gangster-like U.S. pressure and halt all cooperation with South Korea. Furthermore, the COVID-19 pandemic has increased the isolation of North Korea. Borders have slammed shut, trade shut down, and the besieged mentality caused increasing dependence on nuclear weapons. North Korea has already warned of deadly retaliation against South Korea over its COVID-19 outbreak, which it dubiously claims was caused by anti-North Korean propaganda leaflets and the objects flown across the border by balloons launched by southern activists. Mistrust growing and growing. Hannah Arendt said that the most creative human act is the act of forgiveness, act of forgiveness, releasing the other from the past. Mr. Reverend John Wesley, in his sermon, General Spread of the Gospel, he wrote, quoting Prophet Isaiah, “They shall all know me, not from the greatest to the least, but from the least to the greatest, from the least to the greatest.” So we are all intellectuals and the upper class and the greatest people, but we have to begin from the bottom, from the least, the grassroots, the common people. And another quote, “This peace movement has to begin from heart to heart, from town to town, from nation to nation. Not international labels, not top-down, but from heart to heart. That’s why religious intuition and religious artistic feeling and sharing is so important, from heart to heart, from town to town, and from nation to nation. May God bless you and continue to thrive for this peace effort. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Park, for providing the Korean Methodist perspective and also for appreciating Scrap’s name and work, especially for feminist approaches disarmament. Our next speaker is Mr. Malcolm DeBu, president of the Zoroastrian Trust Funds of Europe. Elected in 2009, Malcolm DeBu is currently the twenty-sixth president of the Zoroastrian Trust Funds of Europe, the oldest Asian faith-based volunteer organization in the UK. Malcolm is a trustee of the Interfaith Network for the UK, IFN, and co-moderator of the IFN Faith Communities Forum. He is also a founding member of the Faith Forum for London. He is acknowledged in various publications on Zoroastrianism for his assistance, including Zoroastrians in Britain by SOAS professor John R. Hinnels. He is one of the contributors to the chapter on Zoroastrianism for the religions in the UK, for the Directory of Faiths in the UK, published by the Multifaith Center at the University of Derby. He is also currently on the advisory panel of the SOAS Shapurji Balonji Institute of Zoroastrian Studies. Thank you, Mrs. DeBu.
Good afternoon. First of all, I would like to, of course, thank the organizers for inviting me to give an insight on the Zoroastrian thought process on peace and immortality. And I would also like to thank the organizers in this very important conference to include a panel on interfaith dialogue. Because at the end of the day, even in the 21st century, millions of people around the world are followers of a faith or religion. And some may call it indoctrination from birth, some may call it a calling. But whatever it is the case, it does play an important part in our daily lives. Hence, the part of the faith element in dialogue to scrap weapons, to bring about peace, is important. From a Zoroastrian perspective, just for those amongst you who are not familiar or aware of who the Zoroastrians are, we are one of the oldest religious communities which originated from ancient Iran, also known popularly as the Persians. And those amongst you who know about the Persians will also recollect that we had a mighty empire. So frankly, Zoroastrians, I mean, we are, because of the legacy of the Persian Empire, yes, we are expansionist. We are not pacifist by any means. Nevertheless, it is important to recognize that war does not help anybody. War brings about death, carnage, destruction. And of course, since the, towards the end of the dying days of the Second World War, the atomic bomb, and with the advent of nuclear proliferation, has caused deep anxiety in society, and rightly so. The fact is this, that from a religious perspective, we, from a Zoroastrian point of view, see as the part what we call as evil, collectively or generically. Because Zoroastrianism, our worldview is that initially there was the Holy Spirit, followed by the good mind, which brought about the best truth. And the three attributes, which are attributes of God, brought about the next attribute, the desirable kingdom. And because there’s a desirable kingdom, it brought about peace and devotion. And in a sense, this is connected. Because as the speakers before me have spoken, and this does not require rocket science, that amount of money spent on armaments, when there is peace, that money can be spent on national and international projects. Of course, we have got Representative Oxfam, other United Nations agencies will expound on that. But the fact is, without peace, this cannot happen. And if there is peace, there is, we can sort of expound on our various multinational, international projects, on bringing about improving society, which brings about perfection, and then the last is immortality. These seven are the basic attributes of God in Zoroastrianism. Now, the point is this, that of course we all want peace. How can we get it? The previous speaker spoke about a very hotspot in our world, the Korean Peninsula, where it’s a legacy of the last days of the Second World War, continued the Korean War, the Cold War, and is still with us today. The speaker before spoke about the Gandhian principles, Ahimsa. The Zoroastrian worldview is that we see a constant battle between good and evil. And evil, from the Zoroastrian point of view, can only be defeated through good thoughts, good words, and good deeds. And it is this goodness, which is godliness, and using our good mind, we believe that the only way forward is to be honest with ourselves. And if we are honest with ourselves, we can then convey our honesty and trustworthiness to our enemy, and I use the word very precisely here. Because our enemy also has got the survival instinct. Our enemy also wants the similar aspects of what we want of peace and perfection in life. How do you manage this? And yes, this is the way one forward is, of course, dialogue is important. The meeting of the hearts, the meeting of the minds comes into play, and it’s not easy. Because armaments, for instance, whether it’s nuclear or conventional, is big business. And a lot of people are dependent on that particular part, and there’s a lot of vested interests. And this is what I come about again, the issue of what I term as evil. And I’m talking about evil as a force here and not as individuals or persons. Because it is the important fact, when we come to do disarmaments, when we come to bring about peace, there’s always this part of what the force of evil is lurking about, trying to dissuade people, trying to, you know, bring about distrust. We have to overcome it. There’s no easy answer. It’s a matter of perseverance. Yes, coming back to the Persian Empire, or once, I think you spoke about Isiah, you had in those days the battles on the battlefield, like David and Goliath. Come to the First World War, war became total warfare. No part, everybody was collateral damage. As we have progressed into the 20th century, 21st century, yes, the Cold War finished. We thought we’ll have peace. Sadly, there is another new challenge has developed. And these challenges will continue all the time. And this is why peace is a journey. It's a matter of perseverance. And whatever religion or no religion or no faith, we are all in it together. Because what is at stake is not only humanity, but those amongst us who believe in God and creation, creation is at stake. And hence, it is imperative that we all come together. And in a one way, I am an optimist, is maybe the Zoroastrian religion teaches us that way. And the reason it is this, the optimism, is this, that in Zoroastrianism, evil is not connected to God. The speaker from the Gandhian Foundation talked about Ayamsha and the material world. To us, the idea, yes, we also have the material world and the spiritual world. But in our case, the material world is just as good as the spiritual world, because it both comes from God. And hence, it is important to protect it. And that is where our good mind comes into play. And the holiness, because we, again, I use the word, I know some of us may not believe in God, may not believe in faith, but I'm speaking from a faith perspective, that we are created by God to protect the world. We are guardians, we are custodians. And hence, it's important to ensure to persevere for disarmament. Not only nuclear, mind you, conventional too. Because let's face it, although we know that post Hiroshima and Nagasaki, a nuclear weapon as such has not been used in war, but from 1945 till 2022, millions of people have died through conventional war. They are not only dying just now in the Ukraine, they've died in Iraq, Afghanistan, India, Pakistan, Africa, elsewhere. And this is what weapons do. And I say, yes, we are not pacifist. But at the same time, it's important to recognize what the damage warfare is doing. And hence, it's important to support activities of what the United Nations is trying to do is about trying to bring about the specials, to ensure to have the United Nations Special Session on Disarmament. Because it is these sort of sessions that bring us all together. And we can see there's more commonality than being disunited. Because that is the only way we'll continue to bring about the peaceful nature, which is a win-win situation for all of us concerned. With those words, thank you very much, and thank you for inviting me to speak here today.
Thank you, Mr. Debu, for your powerful intervention and support for general and complete disarmament. I would like to echo a point you made at the beginning about hosting an interreligious dialogue session. And it is an important part of Scrap Weapons, where we believe that we recognize the importance of having a religious voice in forums such as these, as it brings it further into the real world and outside of stuffy conference rooms, not that this is one. And we hope to be able to extend this conversation in the future, so thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Mohammed Samak, who is the Secretary General of Lebanon's Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue. Dr. Samak regrets that he will not be able to participate in our conference today. However, he has sent us a statement to share with us the Islamic philosophical perspective on the importance of interreligious dialogue to advance disarmament. So Dr. Mohammed Samak is the Secretary General of Lebanon's National Committee for Christian-Muslim Dialogue and of the Islamic Spiritual Summit in Lebanon, which consists of Sunni Shia Druze and Alawite Muslims, and is Secretary of the Arab Group for Christian-Muslim Dialogue. He's a member of the Board of Presidents of the World Conference Religion for Peace, New York, and is also a writer and political commentator in Al-Itihad, Abu Dhabi, and Al-Mustaqbal, Beirut. He holds a PhD in Political Sciences and Islamic Thought at the American Lebanese University. Dr. Samak's message will be read by Scrap Weapons Project Assistant, Amar Al-Hadid. Thank you.
Thank you. So Dr. Mohammed Samak's statement is titled, "Why Disarmament is a Must." From the very beginning, why did God consider it good to create people and to introduce them into his universal plan? I read in the Quran, a conversation between God and his created angels. The Lord said to the angels, "Verily, I'm going to place mankind generations after generations on earth." They, the angels, said, "Will you place therein those who will make mischief, and therein shed blood while we glorify you?" God said, "I know that which you don't know." The Old Talmudic story tells us that the angels did in fact try to dissuade God. What good will they be? Ask the angel of truth. "People will be unable to keep from lying," the angels of peace added. "People will never be able to live in peace without quarreling among each other." And so, why not simply give up? But the wisdom of God had a different plan. God told them, "I know what you don't know," as the Quran says. In fact, it did not long for Adam and Eve in paradise to disobey God's will. Their two sons, one became the assassin and the other the victim. Killing and murder never stopped since then. Few years ago, I was visiting Sweden. In downtown Stockholm, I had a lunch in a small restaurant. I read on the meal list a phrase I'll never forget. It said, "They introduce every day a new weapon of destruction. We offer a new dish." The word "they" is meant those humans who have been imagining the end of the world since we have inherited it. In most of our mythologies, the world ceases to exist before it can begin. Zeus and Odin had to wage total war on their forebears to make way for man. Palantologists tell us of the five major extinctions, the last of which was brought to the head, in theory, by a mischievous asteroid that didn dinosaurs and coated the world with a thin layer of iridium-rich sediment 66 million years ago. In the 20th century, offered us, which offered us, two world wars, with about 200 million victims and three global stories to follow, fascism, communism, and liberalism. The 21st century shocked us with a fourth, i.e. religious fanatism and terrorism. And now the war in Ukraine, which might put the whole world on a threshold of destruction. With such cultural background, it's enough for a finger to move and uproot all life from earth. No worry, we have all the means to achieve this satanic destructive goal. But then, there will be no other to blame, because there will be no more other. As people see each other as us against them, they are less likely to believe that the other can be trusted. When mutual trust is low, we are less likely to find common ground on divisive issues. Compromise becomes a sign of weakness, and armament becomes a must, then kill before being killed. What we need today is to be mature enough to save our lives and the future generations from ourselves. That's with other simplified approach to prepare a new dish over a new Armageddon. But conflict after conflict, and war after war, and weapons after more destructive weapons, it's clear that we did not learn from our mistakes, not even from our miseries. Where the angels write, "After the First and Second World Wars, and after the nuclear explosions from military Hiroshima in Japan to peaceful Chernobyl in Ukraine, we humans are moving out of an epoclectic age to a post-apocalyptic age, with fingers on the trigger and closed eyes." Every other day, we know of a new discovery, a new kind of ultrasound nuclear missile, hydrogen bombs, cluster bombs, vacuum bombs, but not a new dish. Now, every single human being is entitled to be killed by this continuous accelerating advanced and accumulated nuclear weapons, at least nine times according to statistics. The bomb dropped on Hiroshima is a child's toy by comparison with today's version. If detonated over Manhattan, it would create a temperature up to five times greater than the center of the sun, extinguishing all life and destroying everything within 150 square miles. We humans never stop inventing, producing, and piling weapons of mass destruction, be it nuclear, chemical, or biological. We go to war to solve problems that cannot be solved but by peace. Ukraine is a current example. The common belief between people of all religions is that God is peace, and peace is the name of God. This means that respect to God is respect to peace. But the real respect is to armaments, violence, terror, and war, all in the name of God. Few years ago, China made a claim based on the discovery of an ancient map made during the Qing Dynasty, that the North Pole is actually an extinction of northern China. An air exclusion zone will be implemented, and even Santa Claus will need to file a flight plan or be challenged by the Chinese stealth fighters. We people of the Abrahamic religions, Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, we did not learn the religious wisdom from our common father, Abraham, where he, by God's will and arrangement, sacrificed a lamb to save the neck of his son. We are still sacrificing our sons, generation after generation, to save the neck of our lambs. Our short-sighted, our short-sighted and inhumane self-interests, here I recall Samuel Pickett saying in his letter to Michel, quote unquote, "I have been reading in the Holy Bible the story of the flood and wishing that Almighty had never had a soft spot for Noah." End quote. At the same time, some humanitarian institutions are seeking to develop and apply the technologies that will enable doctors to care, prevent, or manage all diseases during our children's time. We are performing again and again, Dr. Jekyll and Mr. Hyde episode of Care and Kill. Is this the God's plan, which the angels did not know? Religion teaches us that God created us humans to be his viceroy in caring and administrating the world. But neither heavy armament nor climate change is an indication that we are up to this noble mission. The truth is that armament is a self-destructive role, and so is climate change. It's a man-made asteroid that might make us humans modern dinosaurs. We are already facing the destructive consequences of a one degree cent rise in global warming. But we boast that we can produce a bomb five times greater than the center of the sun. Here, the UN is watching with firmly closed eyes. Since its creation to promote peace between people, it seems it's still waiting for a Jesus-like miracle to open the eyes of a man born blind. True, the UN cannot impose, but it can, and it should, raise its voice condemning, threatening, and advising. After all, it represents the conscience of all humanity. And by being so, the UN has to raise its voice against this suicidal armament that's going on and on. We humans are already destructively squeezed by climate change and armaments. Both are man-made, and both can and should be dismantled. How? There is a way if there is a will. When? Now, before it's too late. And why? Just to say to the angels that God is right and you were wrong. We humans are God's viceroy. Thank you all, and we thank Dr. Mohammed Samak for his statement. And we would like to add a quick reflection on his statement. We in Scrap Weapons Initiative and Conference today reassure that through the UN Office on Disarmament Affairs and the General Assembly, both of which play a major role in advancing the efforts toward achieving a noble goal of having a safer planet for us humans. It's obvious that the urgency of this current situation we humans are undergoing as a consequence of the rising threat of the use of WMDs or the transfer of such technologies to non-state actors. Therefore, the call for a forced special session on disarmament is a need, not a want in such circumstances. Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Amar, for sharing Dr. Samak's message. Our final speaker for today is Father Pauline Kubuya, who has kindly joined us from Rome and the Vatican Diocese for Interreligious Dialogue. Father Pauline, born in Congo, has a Master in Theology from the Mary Hill School of Theology in the Philippines, and a Doctorate in Religious Studies from Fujian Catholic University, Taiwan, China. He has served as Executive Secretary for the Commissions for Christian Unity and that of Interreligious Dialogue of the Regional Bishops Conference of China in Taiwan. At the time of his appointment as Under-Secretary of the Diocese for Interreligious Dialogue on 11th November 2019, he was Associate Professor at the Department of Religious Studies in Fujian Catholic University. Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much. Well, I will stay here to try to save time. And I would like not to thank Professor Dan for having invited me and also his team. And also, I'm bringing on the greetings of Cardinal Miguel Angelay Uso, who is the prefect of our diocese. He took part in the webinar of last year that was talking about the same topic. And his idea that not to be very good, not to have this, also not to have, through me, his thoughts for this encouraging session, this moment that is fostering a session not to call on a UN to hold the long-awaited special session on disarmament. I also want not to thank the panelists because of their valuable contribution from the religious sector for peace and disarmament. Also because I think, as Reverend has said, well, religion gives the intuition, it gives the insight. A religious contribution to a reflection aimed at disarmament is very opportune because as citizens, religious people share the concern of this world and are often first in line responding to humanitarian crises caused by wars, by armaments, by armed race, and endemic wars due to the proliferation of light and also all the kind of armaments that we've been talking about this morning. But in facing those crises, religious people do not adhere to the self-deceiving philosophy that Paul VI in 1964 has already described, saying that "Under the modern condition, peace cannot be assured except on the basis of unequal balance of armaments." And he was denouncing that already at that time. This philosophy, in fact, sustains and promotes the proliferation of weapons. The models of peaceful and stable societies that they foster are centered on the human person as a social creature endowed with as a social creature endowed with spiritual dimensions whose security come not only from being respected, loved, and trusted by other people, but also by a spiritual being or power to which he or she is connected. Religions are capable of bringing the often unnoticed spiritual dimension in defining a peaceful, peaceful human society. And I think that's why it's important also to have our panel also this here. And in this, every religion goes back not to its own tradition and scripture. The question is, what do you read and how do you read? Religious people have more than one source of inspiration to turn to while facing difficult situations that might escalate into war and seem to necessitate a recourse to armaments. It can be argued that pacifism is not the norm in religions today, I think it has been said. In fact, many have stories of war which, though revelatory of human propensity to violence, have often been interpreted as divinely sanctioned. Regardless of this complicated role of violence in sacred texts, there are also many examples exalting trust in supernatural justice and protection, as well as illustrations of one of the derision of trusting in oneself and in man-made weapons for security. The Judeo-Christian scriptures depict that as a lack of judicious wisdom. For there is no more efficacious stronghold than trusting in the Lord. There is a Psalm, Psalm one hundred and eighteen. And also, for this end, David, he confidently declares, "The Lord is with me; I will not be afraid what can mere mortal do to me. The Lord is with me; he is my helper; I look in triumph of my enemies." Or again, Psalm thirty-three. "No king is saved by the size of his army; no warrior escapes by his great strength." But, "The eyes of the Lord are on those who fear him, on those whose hope is in his unfailing love, to deliver them from death and keep them alive in famine." That's Psalm thirty-three, sixteen to nineteen. Scripture further teaches that the Lord fights for those who trust in him. They need not to amass weapons, for God takes their side in battle using his own means. For instance, siding with the Israelites on their way to freedom, God defeated Pharaoh and his troops, letting Israel cross the Red Sea and walk toward the promised land. They needed no weapons, they did no battle, only to remain still in trust. Book of Exodus, chapter fourteen, five to thirty-one. These examples of religious trust are alternative to the prevailing model encouraging the arms race, which works on the presumption that peace and stability are only guaranteed by readiness for war. Yet, though rooted in human history and human ways, religion takes us beyond the paradigm of war and peace. For instance, in the Christian scripture, the teaching of resurrection brings a reflection on peace to a new level that amass the limited logic behind the armed race and war. This operates under the fear of death, which is the ultimate result that arms can cause. Resurrection affirms the victory of life over death, and the Christian insistence on love and dialogue instead of fear and mistrust. For Christians, the guiding value of disarmament program is a call to anticipate the victory of resurrection, a new kind of human life after death suffused with divine love and joy. This resurrection, moreover, as seen in Christian scripture, does not bring peace and joy only in this next life, in the next life, but also in our world today, and that's why it's important also not to talk about it now. Now, in the steps of the many of the predecessor of Pope Francis, Pope Francis, he has noted on several occasions that the arms race is based on a culture of fear and suspicion. Individuals and nations are entrapped in armaments and armed race, for they see weapons as a source of security. They do not realize the inner contradiction of such a logic and the vicious circle of mistrust and fear in which it entrusts people. Among nations whose trust has been eroded, amassing weapons can only be a deterrent of provocation. It cannot foster friendship. It is the option similar to that of a two dog mustn't learn at each other in continuous defiance. The antidote to armaments, in fact, is a culture of dialogue that fosters mutual trust among individuals and groups and prompts the common good, the only viable long-term solution. Christian tradition holds that peace and security are ultimately divine, transcendent realities. This expansive view is a correction to the reductionist logic underpining the armed race, which sets a social peace in the hands of a few decision-makers invested with power, but too few limits in the task of securing prosperity for the rest of the human community. Aspirations to peace and security are divine, inscribed in the human hearts. We didn't, we did not put them there, but we find them there. We are always longing for another joyful existence. People can collaborate to bring about peace, but its materialization also calls upon the involvement of the divine. We have in Catholic tradition, Saint Augustine, who wrote, I quote, "Thou hast made us for thyself, and our heart is restless until it finds its rest in thee." Excluding the religious or spiritual dimension in the quest for a peaceful and secure society is illegally legitimate excessive reliance on human means. The Catholic Church has only, has on many occasions denounced the short-sightedness of logic that is founded on, caught on fear and anxiously and anxious expectation of war, for it is an equal supply of armaments. No mutual trust is the condition for true and lasting peace among nations. That's Pateminterris number one hundred and thirteenth. The Church stands against all the culture emerging from that logic, including armed race, manufacturing and commerce of arms, proliferation of weapons, nuclear and chemical. The outcry for an end of arms race, reduction of armaments, and the ban of nuclear weapons by Saint Paul, the Pope, Paul VI in nineteen sixty-four, has remained of actuality. The stockpiles of armaments which have been built up in various countries must be reduced all around and simultaneously by the parties concerned. Nuclear weapons must be banned. A general agreement must be reached on a suitable disarmament program with an effective system of mutual control. That's again, Pateminterris one hundred and twelve. The present teaching of the Catholic Church does not leave any room for justifying war. Pope Francis, in his many allocution and messages, opposes and condemns war. I quote, "We can no longer think of a war as a solution, because it risks, its risks will probably always be greater than its supposed benefits." In view of this, it is very difficult nowadays to invoke the rational criteria elaborated in earlier centuries to speak of the possibility of a just war. Never again war, end of quote. That's in Fratelli Tutti, two hundred and fifty-eight. He also expects on other believers not to adopt similar attitudes based on their religious conventions, as attested in the opening of the document on Human Fraternity, where, again, this is a quote, "Faith leads a believer to see in the other a brother or a sister to be supported and loved, not an enemy to fight or distrust for any reason." Moreover, no reason should justify war, not even God. For God, the Almighty, has no need to be defended by anyone and does not want his name to be used to terrorize people. That's in Human Fraternity, the document signed together with the Imam Al Taib on the fourth of February, two thousand and nineteen. Of course, then there are some concrete antidotes not to the logic of armaments from religions, from everything that has been said here, and I think also Gabriel has mentioned it, the position of the Vatican is full support for this project of Scrap. So religions as institutions can work concretely to provide antidotes not to the armed race and contribute indirectly or explicitly to disarmament. Through interreligious dialogue, it is possible not to gather the efforts of various religious organizations and orient them to unleash disarmament among their priorities. Interreligious dialogue is integral to efforts of disarmament, because religion touches the heart of humanity. In dialogue, the authentic human values of our religions are revealed, including the common value and goal of peace. Gathering as interreligious partners, it is possible to reflect together on the potential and concrete contribution of religions to fostering a culture of peace. There are many ways religious people and organizations might support the disarmament program. A most direct way of those, aware of initiatives such as the one being fostered by Scrap, would be to support the proposer. The lack of political will among major powers to achieve disarmament is clear. So what religion can do, they can counteract it by informing people about the dangers of proliferation, the inner working of systems that sustain armed race, by increasing awareness about everyone's responsibility to demand a weapon-free society. Religion can collaborate by forming a growing public awareness of humanitarian consequences of the use of nuclear weapons, of armed race, and of the growing burden of military expenditure, especially in developing countries. Such an awareness offers a solid foundation for enlightening a comprehensive approach to disarmament. Religion can build such awareness by publicizing the information and findings of the disarmament yearbook, for instance, by commenting and studying the military expenditure vis-à-vis what are agreed upon as expenditure for the common good. Religion can also collaborate by investing and sponsoring research aimed at shedding light on the movements of armaments versus peace, peace-building and development programs, by studying and availing the investments in armaments. In that way, they can ensure that the funding of their own organizations are not invested to finance war and armaments. Religion can call on the conscience, on the consciences of their members, especially politicians and decision-makers, to commit to policies favoring disarmament. For instance, informed religious organizations can refuse donations from people and institutions who engage in the manufacturing and commerce of weapons and those who are enlisted for the unethical acquisition of natural resources, which in many third-world countries are occasioned for wars by procuration. In places where instability exists, in order to satisfy the greed of multinationals in search of natural resources, religions, religious institutions can raise the awareness of the local people regarding the traps of war traders and the risks involved in serving as weapon markets for arms manufacturing countries. Religions, religious organizations will succeed in this if they challenge the stereotypes of rich, developed countries at peace, and poor, developing countries in unending war and conflicts. If they manage to lead the people to select leaders who are not involved in armed conflicts and whose legitimacy is not based on weapons. Well, to conclude with their vision fixed on what only God can make possible, religious people and organizations will be supportive of disarmament by providing alternative narratives rooted in their rich spiritual traditions and by defining concrete measures to support Scrap initiatives. If at any occasion and at any cost, their stand will uncompromisingly include a call for weaponless societies while fostering a competitive civilization that does not fuel war and mistrust among people and nation. With deep gratitude for the chance of sharing with you. Big respect, thank you.
Thank you so much, Father, for your intervention and for also reiterating the diocese's support for Scrap Weapons Call for General and Complete Disarmament and for your support in a weaponless world. Thank you all for your time and for participating in our panel and for such a fruitful presentation from you all. We will now be taking a break for lunch and will be resuming at two fifteen. For those of you who are joining us at SOAS, please do join us for lunch out in the reception area. Thank you so much.